Call the order, the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, May 5th, 2022. If everyone could please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ethan, would you please call the roll?
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Gallagos.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Hanon.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Also present, Village Clerk Sol.
Thank you. Under my president's report, I have one item. The last meeting, we had a discussion about the sidewalk and sending down a recommendation to the LAC and Preservation, which I think is a good idea, but I just, there's something that we left that I think needs to be clarified. So I believe that it is important to request some clarity on a consensus vote direction, provided the staff at our last meeting concerning the proposed sidewalk that was recommended by the Parks and Recreation Board. While I think that is advisable at times to get feedback from various commissions on proposed improvements, it must be remembered that Turtle Park is under the jurisdictions of the Park and Rec Board per Village Code. And I would like to ask the Board if the final recommendation to this Board is to come from, I would like to ask the Board that the final recommendation to this Board come from the Parks and Rec Board. The path that was shown to this Board was conceptual in nature. The final proposal will be reviewed by our Forester Public Works Director and Engineer, and all plantings, both large and small, will be carefully considered. I have heard from several residents that they use Turtle Park, that they believe the safety enhancements, both walk and crosswalk, are long overdue. The Village Staff, Rec Board take their commitment seriously to maintaining an open natural field, honoring the legacy of our village, and providing a safe environment for residents of all ages. The Landscape Advisory Commission plays a very important role in our green space, and the Preservation Commission has an important role to ensure any changes within the Village do not impact the Village National Historic Landmark Designation. I know that the Park and Rec Board will take their recommendations seriously before sending final plans to the Village Board for approval. So I ask the Board members if they are supportive to sending the recommendations and feedback from these two commissions to the Park and Rec Board for final review, so they can provide their final recommendations to the Village Board.
I'm in favor of that. Are you asking for a vote or disconsensus?
I'm asking for a consensus.
Oh, yeah. Our Parks and Rec.
Two, three, four, five. Consensed. Thank, that was just clarity. Thank you very much. Managers' report?
I just have a brief report. Some residents, and I'm sure the Board realizes, staff has already started our planning for next fiscal year. And as part of that, we start looking at different initiatives that the Board has outlined or suggestions that have been brought forth since the last budget cycle, one of them being actually a sustainability plan and review, which will be incorporating as a discussion point and item during the capital planning process. But I wanted to just put that out there, so that if the Board members have any other initiatives that they'd like staff to review, or if there's any commissions that have different projects that they want staff to take a look at, to incorporate into the planning process, that would be extremely helpful. And also, staff will be conveying this to their respective commissions as we begin this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the sustainability issue, trustee Evans and myself attended a WCMC meeting where they were headed sustainability talk. The two of us, as well as trustee Marshazga, will be joining in on a C4, which is a group of multiple communities that are trying to put together a group sustainability. We don't know if that's the way we should go, but it's at least an opportunity for us to get foundation and kind of figure out what's involved. So we will continue with that. Residents' comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? There's no public in there. Consent agenda. Ratify the voucher list of bills, April 21st, 2022. Approve the voucher list of bills, May 5th, 2022. Prove Village Board trustee regular meeting minutes, April 7th, 2022. Review and file Public Works, Community Balance, Fire, Finance, Police, March 2022. Monthly reports. Review and file Police Annual Report, 2022. Review and file Quarterly Purchase Order Report. Review and file Foreign Fire Tax Board Meeting Minutes, February 10th, 2021. Review and file Planning and Zoning Special Meeting Minutes, February 28th, 2022. Review and file Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting Minutes for March 23rd, 2022. Review and file Landscape Advisory Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, March 1st, 2022. Review and file Riverside TV Regular Meeting Minutes, March 14th, 2022. Review and file Historical Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, March 21st, 2022. A resolution authorizes the Village Manager to approve a change order in the amount of $489.87 for rock salt used during the 2022 snow and ice control season. Motion to approve updates to this special event application. A motion to approve a special event application for the Friends of the Riverside Kayak Paddle to be held at the Scout Cabin, May 14th, 2022. A motion to approve a special event application for the Riverside Memorial Day Program to be held at the Gold Star Memorial Flagpole in Guthrie Park on May 30th, 2022. A motion to approve a special events application for Riverside Garage Cruise Nights to be held June 16th, July 21st, August 18th, 2022. Motion to approve a special events application for the Riverside Concert Series to be held in Guthrie Park on June 17th, July 3rd, and August 19th, 2022. A motion to approve a special events application for the Riverside Independence Day Event to be held on July 4th, 2022. A motion to approve a special events application for Cory's Triathlon to be held on August 20th, 2022. A motion to approve a train station rental application for Shorty Engagement Party to be held on June 18th, 2022. Do any of these items need to be removed?
Could we remove letter O and discuss that shortly?
Sure.
Okay.
So if I can have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda on everything except letter O.
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Gallagos, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Marshazga. Ethan, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Hanon.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Department Board and Commission reports.
Can we talk about O?
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, so for the kayaking event, the kayak outfitter did reach out to staff, and the corrected date is going to be on May 28th instead. It's got to be pushed back. We're expecting a lot of rainfall for the next, at least a week or so. River levels are going to be really high. But what I would like to ask is that the Board give empowerment to staff to coordinate with the kayak outfitter. We've seen this event last year. It went successfully. It's not just a matter of outdoor weather at the time. It's going to be a matter of river conditions and other Mother Nature's tricks that she plays on us. So when it comes to this kayak event, I'd like to authorize staff to deal with them directly, instead of always coming to the Board every two weeks for this event. Does that have to be a motion or a consensus?
Yeah, I have no problem. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Are we just talking about a date changes?
Yeah, in case there's a date change.
Well, in case he wants to add more dates to it, it's the same event. So whether he has it on...
It's not the same date. It's not the same.
You want to do multiple events?
It's the same type of an event. He wants to do it more than once, but then he's got to come to us all the time, and maybe we'll meet once a month, maybe we'll meet twice a month. But why do we have to be so, I don't know, have so much oversight on this if it's a repeated event? I'd like for them to work directly with staff.
What I would suggest is, this would be, is an annual event, to do one or more of these kayaks. So I would suggest you follow the normal procedure, fill out the appropriate paperwork, and just ask for the number of days, that you want the maximum number of days, and the authority for staff to administratively adjust those days. So it would say be a maximum of three events for this season, and then, and to direct staff to work with the group to set those days based on weather and other circumstances. Does that make sense? And you would do one a year.
Well, we do it multiple times throughout the season.
Right, but each season, I think.
Right, so you would say...
Create a cap.
So X number of times per...
Yeah, so pick a maximum. So instead of like this application, you filed for, like many do, a day.
One day, yeah.
One day, but sometimes events can be more than one day. Ask for two days, and you know the dates. So you could ask, because you're not sure of how many dates, a maximum of so many events, kayak events, on days that are to be set by staff working with the applicant. And then the delegation for that would be fine, and you would do it once a year at the beginning of the season.
Just to keep this moving, can we just vote on this one particular event, and then trustee Gallagos can submit a supplemental application with multiple dates? Because I think we all want to see this event come, and we'd hate to have a nice day in May, but because we didn't meet, don't want to delay that. So I think for the one, that's what was before us.
Before us, we have to vote on that.
For multiple dates, Attorney Molina's suggestion, I think, would apply for those ongoing dates. That would be a problem, but just...
Application does read the 28th, or the 14th with the rain date and the 28th, but now it's going to be pushed back with the, if I'm mistaken, it's the 28th with the rain date of the 4th?
Yes.
So on that, you can, this is for one event.
So within this context, tonight, the Board can vote to, that staff has the authority
to pick the day based on weather and other circumstances.
For this particular event?
For this one. So that way, if it needs to be adjusted, you don't need to come back here to change the date, if it can't be the 28th or the 4th.
Trustee Pollak? I agree with trustee Hanon. I think we should approve it as it is submitted, and if the applicant wants to work with staff to modify it and amend it, they can come back in two weeks.
I would agree, yeah.
Okay, I can work with that.
Maximum of five events, as long as it doesn't conflict with other, and leave that as a staff...
This is the exact kind of thing, I think, that should be worked out ahead of time, not at a meeting.
Right. And the other thing, it's important for other applicants to be treated the same way. So that's why it needs to be done that way.
So if you can have that, and bring that back to the front of the Board for the next meeting.
Yeah, and I'll make sure that staff is aware of that.
Okay. I need a motion and a second on letter O.
Make the motion.
Motion by trustee Gallagos, second.
Well, second.
Second by trustee Hanon.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Hanon.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Department Board and Commission reports. Presentation of the 2021 Crime Index and Police Activities Study, Director Buckley.
Thank you. Good evening, President Ballerine, Manager Francis, and members of the Village Board. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to recap our crime statistics for the year 2021. Each year, we are required to submit to the Illinois State Police our uniform crime report for Part I crimes. There are eight Part I crimes that are listed in the report, which we are required to report on. They are murder, criminal sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault and battery, burglary, theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. In 2021, some of our numbers may seem a little bit alarming, especially the two categories, murder and motor vehicle theft, especially when you compare them to 2020. While a jump in reportable crime is not a good thing, municipalities like Riverside with small populations frequently have wide statistical variations in reportable crimes, especially when the variations are compared to the previous year. Unfortunately, in 2021, we had two murders that occurred at the same location. This was a targeted crime, and the offender was caught after he fled the area and was hiding out in Massachusetts. In fact, this afternoon, the Cook County Grand Jury issued an indictment for the offender, so that was approved this afternoon. There was also a jump in motor vehicle thefts from one in 2020 to four in 2021. Of these four vehicle thefts in 2021, all of them had the keys which were left in the vehicles, and many of them were running. All these vehicles were recovered, and the thefts were cleared with an arrest. There were no criminal sexual assaults in 2021. Burglaries were down from 15 in 2020 to nine in 2021, and there were no reported arsons in 2021. Another area that I would like to spend a moment to discuss are thefts. In 2020, there were 88 thefts reported. This number was down in 2021 to 77. This is a number that we could all do our part to lower. Many of our thefts occur because of unlocked vehicles and unlocked garages and sheds. I ask that all residents assist us with this and lock their cars and garages, and please do not leave valuables such as purses, cell phones, computers on the front seats in plain view in their vehicles with their doors unlocked. We have been working with our communication specialists to send out reminders through social media and eflash messages to provide updates and reminders to our residents on current prevention tips. We're hopeful by this partnership with this communication specialist, we'll be able to get the word out on a more frequent basis as a nice little reminder to our residents. I would now like to brief you on a few of the activity numbers for the Police Department in 2021. Our calls for service were 8,670. We had 245 vehicle crash reports taken, 37 felony arrests, 143 misdemeanor arrests, 59 DUI arrests, 347 compliance citations issued, 1,207 traffic citations, and 1,636 parking tickets which were written last year. In 2021, we have been very successful with solving many of the crimes that occur here in Riverside. The reason for this success is that we are able to utilize all of our resources, which include quick notification regarding a crime, excellent witnesses and the willingness to assist us, technology, camera systems, both public and private, have assisted us numerous times. And the most important is good police work by the entire Police Department, who all work very hard together to solve these crimes. I would like to thank all the residents who call us, even for what they think is something very minimal. We will respond. We will take a look at whatever the issue is, and we will resolve it. As many people have heard before, if you see something, please say something. Let us know. We had a call the other day of a vehicle which drove off the roadway and then was driving erratically. Well, the neighbor happened to actually take a few photos of this vehicle. At first, our dispatch center didn't tell us how bad it was, but he actually drove on the front lawn of a house, was there for a little while, and then was able to get back on the roadway and leave. We enhanced the photos that this resident took. We were able to get a license plate and track down the owner of the vehicle, and handled that call appropriately. So it does make a difference by having people call us quickly, and to give us as much good information as possible, and hopefully prevent what might be a dangerous driver from being on the roadway. If you have any questions regarding this crime report or our patrol activity, I can answer them at any time.
Thank you, Matt. I think the other day when you and I were talking, we were talking about filling up my car with gas. I never, ever thought of that I should. I turn my car off, but I don't lock my car. I leave my keys in my car as I fill my car up with gas, and guess anyone could just jump in and press the button to take off. I've never thought of that. So there's a lot of stuff out there that you need to be more conscious of.
And in fact, even if you're standing next to your car with your key fob, when you get out of the car, lock it, because somebody could easily jump in there, hit your start button, drive away with the vehicle, it'll run without the key fob until they turn it off or stop it, you know, actually turn it off. So it all depends what model car you have. So those are things to think about also.
And sometimes it's even, I think about shutting off my car. I've gotten out of my car and walked away and left the car running. So it's, I think we just need to be conscious.
Absolutely, and our hope is to lower all of those numbers through social media, utilizing our communication specialists, keep giving out reminders. We do it already, but I think we're going to enhance it as best we can, and keep that word out there, and hopefully we'll see some of these numbers come down even more.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Buckley? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you for you and the men and women of the police force for all they do for our community. I appreciate it. Moving on to pending business, we have an ordinance amending the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, relative to the parking in certain places on portions of Herrick Road. Manager Francis, please.
Thank you, President Ballerine. So this ordinance has been quite some time in the making. If you've ever taken a look at our Village Code and the parking restrictions, you will notice quite the undertaking it is. And so Chief Buckley was kind enough to work with me on where exactly we could find this within the code and the different restrictions. So this block on Herrick Road, first of all, Chief Weitzel was, they reached out to Chief Weitzel in March of 2021. At that point in time, he brought this issue to myself and also to Chief Buckley and other staff members about this parking restriction issue. This block of Herrick Road is really unique in the respect that it has parking restrictions on both sides of the street. So essentially, residents cannot park their car on the street at all, other than a little part of it that is in close proximity to Harlem Avenue. Otherwise, they have to park in their driveway unless it's after 6:00 PM. And so that created some hardships and burdens for those residents on that block. And so essentially, as part of the feedback and discussion at the staff level, it was my decision then to direct the Director of Public Works to remove signage as it related to the parking restriction for the 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM on the north side. Based on what we could find, it is our belief that that restriction was put there in place based on probably commuters parking on Herrick Road. And so part of doing this trial period of removing the signage and seeing what would happen was to figure out whether and how we would start to see that problem occur. We have not. We haven't had calls for service or issues in that particular area, and so we are recommending that this be codified within the Village Code. You will notice attached to the Agenda History Sheet, there is a map of those that signed a petition and submitted it to Chief Weitzel at that point in time, requesting that the parking restrictions be changed. Their initial request was the parking restriction be changed to at least two hours. But in part of our discussions as staff, it was, well, if you have family visiting or what have you, two hours just doesn't seem like enough. And so if we can really remedy this issue that they are encountering, let's try to do that. And so that was part of having this trial period to see if we would notice any significant issues. And so it is staff's recommendation to codify and remove the parking restriction located on the north side of this block, which is currently from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Manager Francis.
Sure.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none. If I can have a motion in a second?
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Gallagos, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Marshazga. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Hanon.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion passes. Second thing on pending business is a discussion regarding the parking code changes. Again, this is only a discussion. No final action will be taken tonight. Director Johns, and I appreciate everybody on this Board that took time to talk to the different business owners. I've talked to them, and they told us that many of us, many of you all have reached out and talked to them, and have given some feedback, and everybody gave feedback to the Village or to Director Johns, so she can put together a proposal, so.
Good evening. At the April 7th meeting, the Board gave direction to staff about Parking Lot 8 and Parking Lot 12 on Harlem Avenue. Before you tonight is a draft ordinance that will not be voted on, but it establishes two parking lots. The parking lot at 43 East Quincy, which will be designated Parking Lot 11 and an asset of the Parking Lot Fund, and the parking lot at 3320 South Harlem designated Parking Lot 12 in Business District 2 Fund. At the last meeting, the Board discussed in Lot 8, which is along the tracks, that spaces 21 through 25 would be sold as commuterly parking spots, spaces 26 through 32 would be used as meter spaces, and 33 would be used for First American Bank Agreement. It was originally suggested that these First American Bank spaces be relocated to 26 through 30. However, upon further review of the agreement with First American Bank, it does spell out which parking spaces are theirs. The Harlem Avenue Lot, or Parking Lot 12, the spaces on the east side of the lot would be sold as quarterly rental spaces, and the remaining spaces in the lots would be metered parking. As President Ballerine mentioned, we've received a lot of feedback since this last meeting, and I wanted to also bring before the Board some other ideas that have been presented. In Parking Lot 8, the option would be to allocate the current 21 rented spaces for commuters, but make them unassigned spaces. Allow for business parking from 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM in any vacant space 1 through 32. There would be no overnight parking due to snow operations. Another option would be in Lot 8, spaces 1 through 20 stay as assigned commuter parking spaces, 21 through 30 as business parking available from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM. Again, in Lot 8, another option would be spaces 1 through 20 stay as commuter spaces, 21 through 26 as business parking, 26 through 32 as four-hour parking. Another option for consideration would be the creation of a south side of the tracks business parking sticker that would only be offered to businesses located south of the railroad tracks. That sticker would allow employees to park in the designated spaces on the north or south side of the tracks. Another option was to designate other business parking in metered or other Village lots. Another option would be to allow for parking lot rentals at 43 East Quincy if any of the businesses were having a large event in need of excess parking. The last idea presented in front of you tonight is the idea of increasing the street parking from two hours to four hours on that stretch of East Quincy Street. I think it's important to note that also similar to the discussion on Herrick, is that we can, we don't need to take final action. We can do a trial period for 30 to 90 days as well. We do start selling business permit passes for the, sorry, commuter permit passes next week for the third quarter. Are there any questions?
There's a lot of options there.
There's a lot of options.
Trustees? I think there was one option that we talked about was 21 through 32 to be employee parking.
Correct. That would be business parking.
Business parking, and allowing anyone with a business parking sticker to park on the street without being penalized, without being ticketed. So we would leave the four-hour parking, or we'd leave, yes, we'd leave two-hour parking on the street, but anyone with a Village employee permit would be able to utilize those parking spots without being penalized by overstaying the two hours.
Correct. We'd be able to make temporary signage, as well as temporary placards to offer to the businesses to put in their car to help with traffic enforcement.
Trustees, any questions, any thoughts? Yes.
So if we did that, allowing employees to park on Quincy without a limit, then what would we do with 21 through 32?
21, 32 would also be employee parking. That would be in addition to that. I mean, our goal, I think, and I think the goal of the businesses, I would hope, would be that they would access 21 through 32 first, before parking on the street, because street parking, you know, is really made for patrons. But, you know, when I walked the street and I talked to 99% of the businesses, their need was between 20 and 25 spots. And there's 27 spots on the street if you take both sides. And some of them were very open to go into the parking lot, some liked to park in front of their building. I mean, the goal would be to get those employee parking spots 21 through 32 used first, and then when those are filled up, then, you know, that's not enough to fulfill the parking need for the employees, and then the rest of the employees would then be used on the street. So if we use 12, and we're seeing... So if we use 12 and we're seeing a 25, say 25 people need, that means 12, 12 to 15 spaces on the street, assuming every single employee is working that day. 12 to 15 spaces on that street out of 27 that are available. So that still leaves plenty of parking for patrons. And then we monitor it, just like the Herrick. You know, it's something we monitor for 60 or 90 days or a couple quarters. And we make sure that, you know, we make sure the businesses are, it's working for the businesses and it's working for the patrons. That's just one thought. Just, we're looking for some direction. And this doesn't have to be, you know, etched in stone. This, again, like I say, this could be for the next couple of quarters. And then, you know, I've driven that back parking lot and spots 1 through 20, I have not seen any more than seven cars in those spots. And it's 40%, which is very much in tune with, you know, Metro's ridership. And, you know, knock on wood, the ridership will continue to go up, the city will continue to grow back, and those spots will be used again. But we don't know that for at least another couple of quarters.
Yeah, I like to monitor for a couple of quarters and not make any permanent moves as well. I know it's been the chamber's preference that the parking on the streets be more used for patrons as well and keep those in circulation.
Kristin, you've got to speak to a lot of businesses over there. How do you feel?
Well, my understanding from talking to the business, well, at least one business person, is that there is a need for more patron parking. But it sounds like, well, what would the hours be for the employee parking in the lot?
Six.
The employees would be allowed to park on the street in spaces 21 through 32 and along the street any hours except from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
I just, I mean, if everyone's confident there's enough patron parking, then I think they would be happy with it.
One of the things that you can do, and that's the luxury of doing a trial period, is just to really kind of gauge of, you know, we can ask our community service officer to drive down, is he seeing a lot of placards in people's cars taking up the on-street parking? Are we noticing if those particular employees are actually utilizing the parking along the BNSF? Are those being vacant? And then we have a little bit more data to help the Board create some good decisions as to how to manage this. Unfortunately, you know, right now what we're dealing with is different needs, and we don't have the full grasp of, you know, at what times of the day and things of that sort. And so that's the luxury of having this trial is then you create that information as much as we can.
And one of the complaints that, not complaints, but one of the recommendations that I heard is from 3:00 to 5:00, it gets very, very busy there because of the, there's a tutoring school and you know how people are when they want to pick up their children. So that's an enforcement issue, so we'll direct the police to make sure that people don't, you know, when I was talking to Jerry at Metal Mike's, there's parking in front of his driveway. I mean, that's, I mean, that's an enforcement issue, so we'll address that with our police to make sure that people keep those a lot.
Well, we won't, so, mind you, we're not going to ticket people. It's partnering with those businesses, it's educating them, and then also them communicating with their patrons of, you need to park legally, and maybe even coordinating, better coordination of those pickup periods, too.
Okay. Any other issues or questions on Parking Lot 8? Does everybody feel we're, I'm sorry? Yes, Mr. Pollak?
Can I make a motion?
There is, this is only up for discussion. I don't think we can.
But you need.
We need direction.
You need direction. I'm prepared to make a motion to give direction to staff. So before I do that, the one thing I'd like to add is that for 21 through 32, which we just talked about making those available for employees of businesses, I would ask that or suggest that we do that, but we kind of set a soft deadline of 30 days. And if we haven't sold them all, or not sold them, but given all of them out, that staff comes back to us and we modify that to make, if there's three spaces left, we make those public somehow. Because I don't want to be committed to leaving those as employee parking if the employees aren't using, aren't going to.
I hear you, and I think that's a good, but I don't think that's going to be an issue because I.
Okay. Yeah, I don't either, but I just throw that out there.
But with your direction, should we wait till we get Harlem Avenue lot done and have the direction on both? Make a motion for both?
No, you can certainly separate them, but I think Director Johns wanted to give you additional information.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, for the business parking, it's not an assigned spot. It's anyone with the placard or sticker in their vehicle can park in any of those spots. So it's not that a specific spot would be vacant necessarily or not taken, but we will try to monitor how many are filled and how many are parking on the street.
And what we can do is we can ask the community service officer to basically, sorry, I'm allocating work to your staff members, but to basically pull a record within our CAD software to note what time it was, how many spots were filled up. And so then we're creating that record of the different days, the different times. So then the Board can have an understanding of, is this parking really being utilized by the business, or do we have a greater need for commuters, or how do we split it essentially?
And as we talk to the businesses about these spaces, I know just general habit is they're going to gravitate the parking in front of their building. And we should make sure that they understand that really those 12 spaces should be utilized first because we don't want to hinder their business or their neighbor's business by not having enough on-street parking.
President Valerie?
Yes.
Is there going to be signage up to let people know which one is business parking with permit?
There'll be signage for those 12 spots, yeah.
It won't be permanent signage, it'll be temporary signage.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, go ahead, Mr. Pollak. I'm sorry, yes, Kristin?
Can we just talk about the bank contract for a minute? So they have those prime spots right in the end of the lot. And I understand the contract is signed, but I just, can we just talk for a minute about whether we can renegotiate to move them to 1 to 5, which would be closer to the bank?
We surely could. I think the problem with that is 1 to 5, if I understand correctly, are like the gold standard for the commuters.
Correct. Also, the spots along the tracks are owned by BNSF, so we rent those, or we have a lease agreement for the spots along the tracks with BNSF.
So which numbers, is it 1 through 20 that are?
1 through 25. Everything along the tracks is part of the BNSF right-of-way.
But we can use 21 to 25 for employee parking?
We can't. We need to make sure that we have 150 spots throughout all of our BNSF parking.
Along the tracks.
It's all of Lot 1. There are some spots, sorry, on the north side of the tracks as well that go into that calculation, but we need to make sure that we have 150 spaces allocated to commuter parking per our BNSF agreement.
Right. So are the BNS spots on the east side of Lot 8, are those, are just, those are not part of it?
Those are part of it. Those are business parking, so that takes away from our 150. So those are, we have more than 150 spots within the BNSF right-of-way. We only need to make sure that we maintain 150 of them as commuter spots.
So, yeah, I understand that. It's because we wouldn't be taking any commuter spots away by moving these to a different section. Everything would just be moved to the right.
That's true, but you would also be upsetting the first five people that have those spots. I mean, those, again, those spots, they're pretty coveted. So you're just, you're trading one group of angry residents for another, for something that, at the end of the day, we're talking about walking an extra 18 feet. I mean, we're talking five spots at four feet a spot.
Well, I was talking about for patrons to park right across the street from the businesses.
They still have 12 spots that are right across the street.
You mean, right in front of the buildings?
Well, patrons can't park in 21 through 32 anyway. They have to have an employee sticker to park in those spots.
Right, but could they park in 33 to 37 if we move the spots?
Well, you, no, because you'd be moving 33 to 37 to 1 through 5, so you'd be shifting all of the blue down to 25. So we, the bank would then have 1 through 5, and now the 12 spots would still be employee parking. So there is no patron parking, still just employee parking.
We can make it patron parking and cut into the employee parking, I'm saying. I'm just trying to make it friendlier for people who come to visit on Quincy. I just, it's just, I didn't really think in those terms of not having any extra patron parking, but what is everyone, I don't know, what do you guys think?
Yes, Mrs.?
Actually, to Kristin's point, I think that using this interim period, which I think is a great idea, this sort of test period with the stickers to just see how things work and how things are being used, we could use this period as an opportunity to dialogue with First American Bank about moving the spots. Now, I see your point about the issues with moving them to spots 1 through 5. However, if First American isn't using those spots, which they're not, a swap, moving them further up towards the tracks but not right along the tracks, so for example, to spots 26 through 30 or whatever, leaving those front spots that are closer to Quincy that are 37 through 33 open for whatever purpose we decide is the right way to go would give us more flexibility.
But you, we do remember that patron parking is metered parking. Else it's going to be free commuter parking.
No, it'd be four-hour parking.
So we do this with the test case, and we get the spots that are not being utilized by First American further to the bank, further away from the street, making it more convenient for either employees or patrons, depending on how many employees are actually using the spots that are granted to them. It's worth exploring.
It is. But I think what we're, I think what our consensus here, and I could be wrong, so I'll wait for Mr. Pollak's motion, but I think our consensus is to attack this this way for at least two quarters and see what shakes out.
And I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. Doug, could you?
Yes. One follow-up comment, and then I'll make the motion. I would like to ask staff to continue to work with the bank to see what it would take to free up those spaces. Maybe they maintain their lease and their quote-unquote ownership of those spaces, but they let us use them for a while until they need them, something like that. I don't know. But that's kind of another point. You don't need to respond to that now. This is something, I agree with that line of thinking. So anyway, I move that we direct staff to, is it an ordinance we'd be preparing?
Not yet. If we're going to do a trial, let's not start making codes changes.
Oh, okay. So then I would direct staff to.
Just right before your motion, is two quarters enough? I think we had also discussed a year. I just, I don't want you to make a motion for the wrong period of time. Is staff comfortable with two quarters is sufficient, or is three quarters or four quarters more realistic in terms of the data you need?
Well, I think the counter question is, how much data does the Board need to make a good decision? You know, if you want to go through all the different seasons to kind of see the different impact because how people are utilizing spaces in summer can be very different from what we experience in the winter. So the Herrick one, it was an intention to get it before the Board sooner. Unfortunately, as priority of things, you know, a code modification of something that had already been implemented was more of just an administrative piece from my perspective. But I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea because if we notice that things aren't necessarily working out, then we can come back to the Board, report and say, do you want us to try this alternative? At the same time, trying to engage those particular businesses over on Quincy to get some additional feedback on what they're experiencing, do they like it, don't they like it, and just making sure that we keep that ongoing dialogue. Because we had made code modifications in 2019, and we didn't get feedback thereafter to my knowledge. And so then we were under the presumption that, you know, every, that matters had been resolved. And so we want to make sure that we're continuing to get that dialogue. And maybe it's a great initiative for EDC to kind of get that engagement, too, to give us some additional direction and feedback as staff that then we can put together for the Board and for EDC, too.
So I think you could say it, comfortable a year. So, yeah. And then, but we can, you can, a year before we codify it, but any time in the midst, we can make tweaks.
Sure.
Okay? And you can also have an ongoing dialogue with both the Bank as well as the businesses, see how we can make that work.
Would you like EDC to, you know, solicit feedback, the different members, and provide that feedback back to staff and/or recommendations?
I have no problem. Pete, it's, yeah?
I like that idea.
Yeah. Okay. Ed, Trustee Hannan, do you have something you wanted to add before?
No, I was going to sort of like the idea that, you know, minimum of two quarters, and, but with the caveat that, you know, once we get periodic reports back, the key is to make decisions based on data. So I think that plus going, having EDC talk to the businesses, get as much information as we can is a great way to build this.
And the businesses are engaged now, so they will be, they will be talking to us. So, Mr. Pollak, if you could?
Well, yes, I will, but another question, because if this isn't an ordinance, how can we change 1 through 20 to 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM? Can we just unilaterally do that?
So the Board can, I don't want to dabble in your area, Lance, if you want to opine?
No, no, go ahead.
The Board can give us direction, and then it becomes more of an enforcement matter as it relates to the Police Department.
Right. The issue, so the issue is going to be that you're not going to, as Trustee Francis indicated, this is going to be a dialogue about enforcement during the interim period. Citations won't be issued.
Correct.
And because that's the real, that's the real issue. You can give all kinds of direction, but because you don't have to rely on citations and somebody saying, hey, I looked at your code and this, it's not there, that's true, but that, you know, that's something that's the price of doing a test.
Okay. Just for clarity, it's Manager Francis, not Trustee Francis.
Sorry.
Because the next thing, the next thing we're going to hear is going to be President Francis. Doug?
Okay. So I move that we direct staff to implement a new parking plan for Lot 8. Spaces 1 through 20 being designated as commuter parking by permit from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM and public parking thereafter until, is it 2:00 AM?
Commuter parking would be the standard times for commuter parking.
We're not changing the commuter parking.
But that's what, I thought that's what we said we were doing.
No.
Rather than a motion, I mean, this is a consensus. You've gotten our consensus. I think, like any other consensus, we really don't take votes on it or make motions. I mean, I think the staff has heard the discussion and we can simply.
I just want to make sure we have.
But what's a consensus?
I think, let me summarize, and you guys can jump in if I'm wrong. 1 through 20 would be status quo.
Correct.
21 through 32 would be employee parking with a sticker.
Or a placard.
Placard. Parking on the street would remain to two hours, but if a business has a employee placard in their window, they will be allowed to stay on the street without being ticketed over two hours.
Except during the hours of 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
Except during the hours of 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. I think that encompasses everything. Are we good?
I like that idea.
Just, can I say one more thing? So, I, my understanding was that, you know, like with tours and things, they needed more than two-hour parking?
But they have the whole street.
It was my knowledge, and maybe I'm incorrect, that those tours are on the weekends, and so that's why we made the code modification in 2019, unless there's something else that I'm not aware of.
So, they can park for longer than two hours on the weekends?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus during the week, if, if Derek is doing something during the week at 6 o'clock or something like that, he can always contact 43 Quincy, because, and the rec department.
We can see if the Parks and Rec Department doesn't have any programming, because we don't want, you know,
Kids were on...
patrons and for other businesses coming in and out of that lot with the kiddos and stuff. But another item to be mindful of, if, if Quincy Distillery or any business for that matter is having a big event where they're going to have a lot of people notifying the police department of that there's going to be extended parking, and then we can also work with them on a parking plan. It always is helpful to know if someone's having a lot of patrons coming into their business, because then there's greater coordination with the police department. They can get ahead of it instead of getting calls or complaints and being reactive.
And I would assume that the spots 21 through 32, when, when someone is running a vent, if, if it was told that I'm going to run a vent, those would be open and they can use those spots, even without a sticker, as long as the, the police were notified and proper notification was given to the village.
Are you talking about for, I'm sorry, patrons or...?
Yeah, if there's a big event at the distillery.
We will certainly, as long as we are notified, we are always open to working with the different businesses and coordinating different pieces at administrative level.
Keep the dialogue going.
Absolutely.
All right, I think we, we're good?
Yep.
Okay, we move on to Harlem.
Oh, sorry, yes, Lot 12. Thought you were moving to the next agenda item.
Just flipped my page.
So, currently, we are under discussions for Lot 12 to have the, the back of the parking lot be commuter parking lot, and the center section to be metered parking, and then trying to work with Amazon to potentially get Amazon lockers where the former ATM is. Is that still the direction of the board? Or would you like to try a trial of two-to-four hour parking in this lot as well?
Trustees?
I thought we were trying to get Amazon in the visitor center.
We're trying there too.
We'd love to get them anywhere.
I mean, I, I, I think, I think that the same, since nobody chimed in, as we look at Harlem, it's really a new space. I mean, those businesses, there are businesses along Burlington, there are businesses along Harlem. I talked to a couple of businesses. They're excited about having the opportunity to be able to park. So, I, I would think in that parking lot, we'd want to do the same thing. Since commuter ridership is so down, there's no reason to, to designate commuter spots there yet. Let's just do a two- or a four-hour trial period, the same as, we didn't see how the businesses work there, and leave our options open with that spot also.
Yeah, I do remember being on Harlem Avenue, and when Bank of America asked all business owners to not park in their parking lot, it did become an issue, so I would like to have a couple of quarters to see what it looks like, where the business owners have the needs, and see what it's like over a couple of quarters, and then we can make a decision later on.
So, very similar to what we're doing to Lot 8.
Except this would be open for our parking, not just business employees only.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Okay, is that, do I have?
Yeah, I like that.
I hear nods, okay. I hear, I see nods. Okay, thank you. A little less painful than the last time. New business, an ordinance approving a variation for construction of a deck five feet from grade to allow existing non-conforming deck stoops to be a large 263 Blackhawk. Francisco, if you would please walk us through this.
So, the petitioners at 263 Blackhawk are seeking variations from Section 1073 D2 and Section 1010 dash, sorry, 10104 C to allow the construction of a deck in the rear of the property at five feet from grade and to expand two existing non-conforming stoops, decks in the rear, to form a single 280-square-foot deck. The current structures are built in a way that they're attached to the floor joists of the house, and the handout that I put on your desks earlier show what they look like currently. There are more pictures in the PDF packet on pages 292 and 293 to give you an idea, they're just more close-up photographs of the, of the decks and to show you the condition of, of the decks. The existing structures will be torn down and replaced with this proposed 280-square-foot structure. The, there's, the other handout currently on your desks is the, the proposed deck plan, and there are currently pavers in the rear of the property where the current structures are that will be relocated to the, across the yard and placed in front of the detached garage. The certificate of compliance that I was able to find from 2016 states that the current impervious surface is 41% of the lot. With the proposal, in addition of this deck, it would be 45%, so that would still be below the threshold of 50% for the R1 zoning district. The existing house has, there is a basement window, which you can see in the picture, that is at grade. So, removing or relocating that basement window would be just cost prohibitive to the owners. I did ask our inspector if there were alternative methods of construction that would not require a variation. There are, except they are all cost prohibitive to the owners. One option is a larger ledger board, but again, that basement window gets in the way if you're going to add that larger ledger board on the house. Another option is what's called a floating deck, except the, the way the inspector explained it, the backfill that's closer to the house isn't ideal for peers for a deck, so it wouldn't be very recommended for this project. So, using the existing, I guess, hardware that is installed on the house would be the easiest way for the homeowners to build this proposal. And with regards to, because in February, the, the board also reviewed a variation for a property at 490 Yewdale for a deck in the rear as well. Their deck is also five feet from grade because they had a basement door. And so, I spoke to the inspector, and I also tried to, we tried to figure out why this forfeit limit is in place in Riverside. I couldn't find anything in our files. He just thought maybe it was for cosmetic reasons, but there are no structural reasons. So long as building standards are followed, the, you can have a two-story deck, so long as everything fits to code. So, 263 Blackhawk, 490 Yewdale, and another property at 310 Maplewood, all similar. They have deck structures in the back that are five feet. So, it's not super uncommon to have decks that are above the grade. And then, also did some research with other communities. They don't have any deck limits, so long as the building, or whatever the respective building code is followed. The proposal would be out of the way of the public view, and they would just use it for personal enjoyment. They're not doing it for, they're not constructing it for any other, you know, reason other than just, they want to have a bigger deck to be able to use. And they would also kind of orient the, there is a back door that has one of the step landings that goes into the driveway, so they would switch that so that it goes into the backyard as opposed to into the driveway for safety reasons, if they have kids or just people, you know, accessing the back of the house.
I think it's also important to know that the, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission was 6-0 in favor of allowing this variance.
Correct.
Any questions from any of the trustees?
I'm in favor, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion?
We're just, we're being asked to approve the variance, but separately consider a text amendment.
Correct.
Yes.
You know, with this, I mean, one, let's finish this first, is, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Hanna. Any further comments? Hearing none, Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye. And now, Ms. Clarity, your point is that now we, this is going to be remanded back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to take a look at a text amendment to, because this has now happened twice in the last 30 years.
Correct, yes.
I wouldn't say it's being remanded, this was a one-off, you're giving direction.
Direction, okay, I'm sorry. The other thing I'd like to, I, I watched the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and do, do we allow stairways to go into a driveway like this? This seems to be a dangerous, that, the way, I mean, literally comes out of the sidehouse directly into the driveway. I could just see a kid running down the driveway as a parent's driving up a driveway. I, I don't know the answer to that, because I just really noticed it, but...
I, I don't think I've seen anything in the ordinance that states that it's not. I don't know if there's a building regulation on that aspect. There was another property that I encountered last week as well, where they want to, they have a patio, and they're trying to do something with it, but their existing steps also go into the driveway. So, I don't think it's that uncommon for that to happen, but I can check with the inspector to see if there's any...
It just seems, it just seems dangerous to me, but, okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to make sure that there was consensus on...
Send it back, yes.
To do the text amendment.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, sorry.
You don't see the nods as fast as I do.
Apparently.
If I don't, if I, yeah, if somebody doesn't yell at me, I could take it as a consensus. A motion to accept the village letter of support for the National Landmark Designation Boundary Increase. Manager Francis?
Thank you so much. So, I will do my best, but I will absolutely admit that Trustee Marsh Azga is more of an expert on this particular piece, because she has been dealing, not dealing, but communicating with National Park Service for many years before this. And I know that she would also like to request that the village board appoint her as the spokesperson. We have a conference call with the National Park Service on May 12th, and obviously, her being so knowledgeable is truly an asset, and so to allow for her to be part of that would, would be great. Attached within your packet is the letter that was drafted. We were on a very short timeframe to get consensus of the village board to send it out, because it was actually due today. It was submitted yesterday on behalf of the village. Additionally included are letters of support from the Landscape Advisory Commission that were placed next to your seat, and also from the Riverside Historical Commission. I will just note that the process began on updating our boundaries back in 2007. Those are the reports that I can find. On January, or June 28th, 2013, the village received a notice that National Park Service was going to conduct a boundary increase study. And so, from then on, began the process of them evaluating and reaching out to the Preservation Commission, and Trustee Marsh Azga, at that point in time, was on the Preservation Commission and provided feedback and guidance. I did include a map in your packet for your reference to just have a basic understanding of what the current boundary is for our landmark designation and what we are looking to include to then be incorporated.
This is just a small section in red. Do we need two motions, one for the, the letter of support, and the second to appoint Trustee Azga as our spokesperson?
Well, they, it can be done in one motion, but they are two different things. But you can certainly, if no one wishes to separate those, someone can make a motion to accomplish both of those, and if it's seconded, it can be voted on.
Okay, perfect.
I'm good for both, so I'll make the motion to approve both.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Evans, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ethan, please.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye. Thank you, and the board thanks Trustee Marsh Azga for taking on this task. We appreciate it. I will be on the call with you, but I will be silent in the background.
Wonderful. It should be very, very interesting, and, you know, that'll be a proud day for Riverside.
We appreciate you taking this on, thank you very much. Trustee reports and communications.
I do have a few.
Trustee Gallegos.
Brief, but, so last week, I, I know some people didn't have an opportunity to make it, but those who didn't make Olmstead 200's party on the 20th St. train station really missed out on a fantastic event, and the event that followed after the library. The music was really, was really great. Those red velvet cupcakes were absolutely delicious. But you would have also missed the announcement of Riverside's Person of the Year, and that is Connie Guarde. The room applauded when it was announced that she was this year's recipient, and she's, of course, graciously accepted. She's not in social media, she couldn't be here tonight, but she did want me to pass along her very many great appreciations for those who, who congratulated her on that, on that highest, highest award we have in, in the village. Earlier today, we had a few from our Riverside's finest attend the State of Illinois Law Enforcement Memorial down in Springfield. On the 10th of May, at 11 o'clock, we will have a local policeman's, Police Officers' Memorial of Pough County here at Sirmack Woods on Oden Avenue in Lyons. They will be to honor the memory of Officer Gary Hibbs, Lieutenant James Kowski, Officer à la French, and Officer Alan Chichichi. The public is welcome to attend. And lastly, from the Lyons Club, the annual chicken dinner is going to be in a somewhat new form. We did approve this at a previous meeting, but it's going to be a drive-through form on the 15th of May. That's Sunday from 11 o'clock to 5 o'clock. Tickets are $13, and it'll be a drive-through event at Presbyterian Church, much as the same as the Boy Scouts did just a couple of months ago. And that's all I have for today, sir.
Anyone else? Trustee Azga?
Thank you for mentioning the Olmstead 200 events, it was a really great day. The, if you haven't had a chance to see the massive botanical box that has been installed at the Riverside Public Library, I encourage you to stop by and check it out, check out books, and also check out the No Mo May Patch, that is a 20 by 20 area that's been designated outside the library for the month of May to encourage our polliners, pollinators, and to sort of be a living experiment of the LAC to look at biodiversity and track what we're seeing over the course of each week of the month of May. So, in order to communicate this interesting educational experiment to our residents and to our community, there will be weekly updates via eFlash, Facebook, and on two posters, one of which is outside the village offices here, and one of which will be at the Riverside Public Library. So, that's all I have for my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. I only have one thing, and I know we probably said this before, but on Tuesday, this, this, the 10th, Ray Navarro will be honored as the John Gianski Award Distinguished Citizens at the Lyons Club Meeting. We've had many very respected residents that have gotten this award, and Ray is in a long list of good companies, so we all congratulate Ray. So, with that, tonight, we have the, the need for an executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, to discuss the setting of price for sale or lease of village property, and to discuss the purchase/lease of property for the use of public body. The board will not convene, and no final action will take place. So, I will ask for a second and a, a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting, not to reconvene.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Marsh Azga. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.